We're going to join.
Okay, everybody ready? I'll do this. Call this September fourteenth Planning Commission meeting to order in our tight quarters here, a little more informal. But we'll still follow our agenda. So I'll start out with roll call. Kerry Bosworth. Resco.
Present.
John Bachman.
Here.
Sayad Safabian.
Yeah.
I am Mark Bachman and I am here. Sudhranay Sankara.
Here.
Ajay Chakrapani.
I'm here.
Everybody is here. I'm glad for that. All right, meeting accessibility statement.
All right. The public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, eight oh one two twenty eighth Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-adjunct comments, five minutes of representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will be muted until you are called on during the public comment period. If you have a public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link, https colon forward slash forward slash US zero six, W E D dot Z O O M dot U S forward slash J forward slash H two eight two two six four eight seven nine four. To get public comments via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number, U S plus one two five three two one five eight seven H two webinar ID, H two eight two two six four eight seven nine four out.
I'm always glad that the U S plus one is in there, just in case somebody's calling in. Europe. Okay, approval of this evening's agenda. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the climate draft Climate Action Plan. Anybody have any comments about the agenda? Nope, so we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next, approval of the minutes from a while back, July twentieth, July twentieth Planning Commission meeting. Any corrections to those notes or comments?
Yes, there is one. So it was a public comment. By actually Mary. It says topic was, let's see, I'm sorry, it was the non-agenda items. Most of housing density should go into town center and critical areas. I think it should be a separate sentence of something.
Good catch.
Stating importance of critical areas or something like that. So I don't think we want to.
Not the word not.
Or not critical areas, that would. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for catching that.
It'll be an interesting change of direction. All right, anything else? So we'll call the minutes as noted by Mike Resco approved. Next, we will do non-agenda public comment. So what do we have for non-agenda public comment? Mary, you want to go first or?
So the microphone is there, right?
Yes. Above us.
So I should stand next to David.
Have.
You don't mind, right?
Not at all. There, we have a time.
Evening, everybody. My name is Phil Ritter. My wife Lynn and I have lived in Sammamish for six years. I'm a CPA and I do financial consulting for nonprofit housing developers. I'm on the steering committee of People for Climate Action and have been a member of the Climate Action Plan Community Advisory Group. We're all aware after the hottest summer in global history, with over a thousand uncontrolled wildfires, just hundreds of miles north of us, that the IPCC call for reducing fossil fuel use by half in the next six years is not a wild exaggeration. Remember, the K four C commitment that was approved by our city council was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by half by 2030. The IPCC commitment is pretty much the same. The Climate Action Plan, which you're reviewing tonight, will be the basis for the programs and ordinances which will be prioritized over the coming five years or more and should be aspirational. It has an E V adoption goal of only 20% by 2030. There's no reason why that goal number two on page sixteen should not be 50% by 2030 to make it consistent with the overall objectives. We're already at about 7%. It's not unrealistic to get to 50% by 2030. A related concern discussed by the Community Advisory Group is the method of calculation of the transportation baseline emissions described on page forty-four, which does not take into account the electric vehicles which do not contribute to greenhouse gas emissions. Using the current calculation to track progress in future years will not show the reduction in emissions that we achieve by increased adoption rates for electric vehicles. Let's start out with a proper means of calculation which exists. And if the consultants don't want to do the extra work, then figure out somebody else to do it. Another consistency concern is with B E U two point two on page nineteen, which gives the city six years till 2030 to develop a template for building energy performance disclosure. There are lots of examples in other cities of this type of template. It shouldn't take six years. By 2030, we should be able to get performance information on a substantial number of our commercial and residential buildings if we move up this goal. If the goal's not in this plan, we're not going to do it. We've also discussed on the Community Advisory Group, a missed opportunity on B E U two point four on page nineteen, which does not address the existing residential buildings which have both gas furnaces and one-way heat pump air conditioning units that only provide air conditioning but not heating. But they are plugged into the, to the home ducting system. And they're getting older. A lot of them are already 10 years old and they have about a 20-year life or so. We should add the requirement that these old heat pumps must be replaced by a two-way heat pump which will replace the gas furnace. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Phil. Okay, Mary, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mary Wickter. I've been in Sammamish 23 years. And I brought some more maps tonight. These are not Mary maps. These are city maps. I'm just printing them because I think it's much easier to deal with them in a printed version than. So in July, I had brought this one. It's from Comprehensive Plan. It's for land use five, which has a map in the gray areas where the steep slopes are. And you can see that they're on kind of the left shoulder of the plateau. And then I also gave you this one, which is the geo-geologic hazards, which are erosion, landslide, steep slopes, and also seismic. But the seismic is really just along the lake. And it's not everywhere, like people in Kohani don't need to worry about these things because it's pretty flat. And then the places where it's really dense, that's where you'll see a lot of trees on that big map. And the other thing, and for those of you who were around, I showed you how the sea here with erosion had actually been preserved with this. You can see the sea kind of in the Margaret Mead elementary area. Oh, here we go. With the Margaret Mead, you can see this sea in here. So if you do have the code and you use it properly, you can help protect the environment. And then I saw in the upcoming calendar that you guys are going to do existing conditions assessment, which should include the natural environment. The natural features should influence land use. Steep slope should limit development potential. So I wanted to add a map to this because on the geologic hazards, which I'll say geo-hazard sometimes. If you look, there's the red, the light red is erosion and the dark red is landslide. And you'll see those pretty much mapped together. And then you'll see this part here, kind of in the middle of the neck of the plateau by the lake. That's where Tamarack is and that's what this map particularly is. And it just doesn't have erosions. We only get landslide code. We don't get erosion code. Landslides are actually riskier than erosion and we kind of need joint code. And a lot of work had been undone on erosion and a pilot project which was set up but never used and then deleted for, I believe, all the right reasons. And the Parker Plate was bought by the city. But this area really, really needs help. So I wanted to show you how the steep slopes, which are gray, work in this area. And this is a map from the city's ordinance in 2016 specifically for Tamarack and Inglewood, which is above it. I just didn't bring that map. You can see that the blue part is actually what this dark red part is. A layer isn't married to a certain color. You can draw whatever color that you want. But the shapes are the same. And you will see that the light yellow is slope-based. That's 40% or more. It's pretty steep. And then you'll see this is a landslide. So a lot of the steep slopes are actually in the landslide hazard area. But there are a lot of places that are steep slopes, which are yellow, which are not in the blue landslide hazard area. And it's important that that code works both ways. And if you want to know where I live, I live right here. I'm half in the landslide, half not. I do have steep slopes on my property. And I will say that this map actually perfectly depicts my property. So even though people might say maps aren't good, they're generally pretty good. If they're not good somewhere, you either need to ground truth or allow the map to be changed or have a way to do that. But I wanted to make sure that you have all these because we're going to be doing existing conditions for the critical areas, which we do not want the density in. We wanted in town. So you can keep these and study them.
Any other non-agenda comment?
Good evening, Planning Commission in a confined room. It's kind of neat to see so tight around a table. Um, my name is Paul Stickney Sammamish. A little bit of structure and a little bit of ad lib tonight. Sent in a written comment on the sustainability plan. I'm not an expert in that. I've talked to a couple people that feel in general this is a very good body of initial work relative to peer cities. But I'm not an expert to talk as Phil Ritter or others who have some precise recommendations. As all of you know, I've been working on what I call the underarching issue, which is land use and housing for life. And I feel very important that we have support across all city programs and plans to get optimal amounts of lifetime and legacy housing. So for those that live and work in Sammamish, all economic, demographic, and workforce groups, what's the right mix of housing supply so people can stay over time for unplanned and planned changes? And what's the legacy that we want to leave for future generations? In my view, we're 20 to 30 years late in this. It can't afford to be put on hold another 10 years completely. So hence, that's a little bit reflected in my comments discussing to add policy support for housing affordability for lifetime and legacy housing. I've noticed some stormwater things, and I'm not sure of this. But I read the stormwater things as potentially moving into an arena that no other city has done, which is volume control. If that's not the intent, then I retract my statements. If that is the intent, I strongly feel that stormwater volume is not an issue. Flow is the issue. And that's a long story. But our stormwater standards in our community, including our Sammamish addendum, are the strictest in the region. And they have a wonderful baseline, which is to have no more flow leave a site than pre-developed forested conditions. That's a tremendous protection level. It's most of the rest of our housing that's not at that level. And then I put in adding a goal to put the town center in the plan and to optimally increase it. You can listen to my comments at the last two or three meetings and go to the fiscal sustainability page and take a look at the written comments that I turned in about a, I turned in three that are kind of a soup to nuts, highly concise and clear alternative to how to make all this fit. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say tonight is to work housing affordability for life and legacy into the plan. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Anybody else? Okay. So let's move on to our main topic for this evening, which is a review of the Climate Action Draft Climate Action Plan. And since David's got his laptop open and warmed up here, I'm guessing we're going to jump over to that screen.
We are. All right. First of all, thank you for your flexibility in meeting in a smaller room. We really appreciate that on short notice. Things happen and being flexible really important to make sure we're able to still do the public's business. So, good evening, Chair Bachman, Planning Commission, members of the public. David Pyle, Community Development Department. Tonight, we're pleased to present to you the second public draft of the city's Climate Action Plan following release of the first public draft at the Joint Commissions Meeting last week. I'm joined here tonight by Alexis Whitaker from Brightworks Solutions, who has been our consultant on this project, and also by Miriam Leitner, who's in the cloud, our planning manager, Evan Fisher, our senior management analyst, and Rose Wecker, our sustainability coordinator. Just a reminder that tonight is the primary review for the Planning Commission of the draft Climate Action Plan before the public hearing. The public hearing was originally scheduled for October fifth, but has been moved to October 12th due to the commission meeting with the council at the October third Joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting. We appreciate the flexibility again on meeting dates and are thankful that we can accommodate this change. And it does not impact the overall timeline or adoption of the Climate Action Plan. We will make sure to check for conflicts with the room. On this slide, you see the upcoming Climate Action Plan meeting schedule. Again, following tonight's workshop, the commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the Climate Action Plan on October 12th. And the city council is scheduled to hold a workshop on the Climate Action Plan on November seventh and then hold a public hearing and possibly adopt the Climate Action Plan on December fifth. We will be looking for a Planning Commission recommendation at the October 12th meeting following closure of the public hearing. In addition to the dates listed here, I did also want to take a minute to provide a bigger picture outline around how the city will transition from developing and adopting a Climate Action Plan to implementing the Climate Action Plan. As shown here, the city council will take up a review of the draft Climate Action Plan at the November seventh City Council regular meeting. At that same meeting, after their workshop on the Planning Commission-recommended draft Climate Action Plan, the city council will also hold a workshop on the creation of a new Sustainability Commission. This is anticipated to include an overview of amendments needed to Title II of the Sammamish municipal code, as well as a resolution needed to set the charter and work plan for the newly created commission. Ideally, the commission would start meeting in Q1 of 2024. With the drafting process behind us and with a new focus on legislative review, we wanted to orient the commission and the audience to the plan itself and how it is laid out to help drive the reader to the actual goals, strategies, and actions. We have summarized the background information and development components related to drafting of the plan in the Plan Development section with more specific details in appendices that you see in blue below. A lot of the background material has been pushed to the appendices in order to allow for brevity in the primary component of the plan and make it more user-friendly to the reader. These were deliberately included as appendices, although they provide great background as they're not essential to the plan itself. That said, please make sure you take the time to read through the appendices as they do provide key information that will help with your review. We'd also like to note that since the meeting last week, budget information was added to the implementation matrix. And many of the metrics have been updated to ensure they were realistic and measurable. You can see a full list of changes made since the draft provided for, since the draft provided for the joint meeting in exhibit two. I do also want to take a minute to describe the purpose of this draft plan. This plan is not intended to be a comprehensive roadmap to meeting established, and meeting established goals. Keep in mind, this Climate Action Plan is intended to be a living document. There will be further refinement of each of the strategies and actions as we work through implementation. The city will be chartering Sustainability Commission with the goal of seating the newly formed commission in the first quarter of 2024. Two of the, two of the roles we anticipate the commission will take is serving as a policy-level advisor on updating or refining the plan, as well as on sorting through priorities in which strategies and actions are brought forward for implementation. You may note that the plan is not designed to direct implementation. Rather, priorities for implementation will be left will be left and considered, and considered in balancing other community objectives. In many cases, implementation relies on allocation of funding or budget or relies on partnership. Naturally, you'll need to work towards the right timing for implementation of any of the strategies or actions to ensure success. At times, this results in us waiting for budget to be available or waiting, waiting for the right partnership to mature to a point where we can actually implement the strategy or action. We also wanted to summarize some of the key pieces of feedback we heard from the joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission on September sixth. You can find the detailed feedback provided in exhibit three. We did want to note that in regards to the first bullet, Brightworks has re-reviewed the strategies and identified that and identified strategies key to building foundations of success while also being impactful and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. That first bullet is the number of actions feels overwhelming and should be prioritized or reduced. We do have sympathy to the reader on that. This is quite a lofty plan that is a lot, a lot going on. So appreciate everyone's patience in reading through this document. All right. We do have a strategy to address feedback or proposed edits related to the plan. These will be added to the public hearing draft on October 12th. Hold on, let me go back a minute here. All right. One other point we wanted to make was that the, the the strategies and actions that are most impactful to reducing greenhouse gas emissions have been shaded in appendix H. So you should be able to see those. They should pop out to you. You should be able pull those out and identify which ones are most impactful. So please consider this during your review. We might suggest that you go to those and look at those first and see which ones we think are most impactful to get an idea of what might be missing. We also wanted you to know that we do have a strategy to address what feedback or proposed edits will be added to the public hearing draft for October 12th versus what items we need the planning commission to vote on for inclusion in the, with the recommended draft versus those comments or proposals that will need to be carried forward and worked on after plan adoption as part of the Sustainability Commission's work plan. We'll get to that in a minute, but for now, we wanted to highlight what we have heard. With the closure of the Community Advisory Group process, some CAG members had outstanding comments that they wished to see carried into the legislative process. For those Community Advisory Group members who chose to submit additional comments, we are bringing those forward for Planning Commission consideration. You can find the detailed feedback as well as the project team's responses in exhibit four, with the exception of number two under general items here, which was provided after the forum closed. The items we're highlighting from the CAG tonight on this slide and the one following are those noted as being discussed as part of legislative review. As with the feedback from the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, we ask that you can, please consider this feedback during your review and any amendments you propose for the public hearing on October 12th. Please be sure to flag any items you feel warrant further discussion or consideration, keeping in mind that some of these have a larger implication than others. Basically, if you see something here as we walk through these or in your review of the matrices that you would like to talk about further, please feel free to raise that. Definitely want to hear about those. And if you identify something in your review after this meeting and you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. We'd be happy to talk through anything with you. Want to make sure you have the, the, the most information on each of these so that if you do propose an amendment, that you're fully aware of the implication that that might bring. These are also additional outstanding comments related to either existing or proposed actions. Please be sure to, again, flag any items you feel warrant further discussion. A complete response to each of these is included in exhibit four. We'd be happy to go back to these slides after the presentation and walk through them a little detail.
Sure. You, in your past recommendation, you said the item three, sorry, exhibit three was the one to review here. Everywhere it says exhibit four for detailed feedback, isn't the feedback?
Yeah, four.
Okay. I thought you were right, that it was three that had the joint meeting commission and the, you were right.
I see Miriam has her hand up.
David was right. I was wrong when I made that one edit. So the CAG feedback is exhibit four. The joint or the Parks Commission feedback is exhibit three. I apologize.
Got it, got it. Perfect. Now we're on.
Thank you. Good, good point. Oops. All right. In just a moment, I'll hand things over to Alexis with Brightworks to facilitate discussion related to the questions included in the Agenda Bill. But before I do that, as promised, I wanted to go over our plan for collecting and addressing feedback received tonight, as well as feedback received by the Planning Commission before and after the meeting. Earlier this week, on Tuesday, September 12th, Miriam emailed the Planning Commission a link to a JOT form to submit comments. We will leave that form open until the end of the day on Tuesday, September 19th, and ask that you submit any proposed changes or other feedback you identify as you review the draft cap through that form. So we have everything in one place and it's easy to track. Feedback will be reviewed by the project team and addressed based on the type of feedback as shown in the categorization on screen. Minor corrections or updates will be integrated into the new draft for the October public hearing. Changes that are more substantive, but that don't impact the project work plan and don't require additional budget and do not require additional policy analysis, we brought to the Planning Commission for discussion and direction in October. Changes that are more substantive but require additional work outside of the project scope and additional budget and would require additional budget will be brought to the city council as potential work plan items for the Sustainability Commission. This will be a separate but related process from the Climate Action Plan adoption and will be taken up by the Sustainability Commission as part of their group's work plan. We will be bringing a list of items that fit category two, including proposals from the CAG and from the Joint Commission meeting for Planning Commission deliberation at the October 12th meeting. We will also have a list of changes made under category one, as well as a list of items recommended to be forwarded to the Sustainability Commission as a work plan item under category three. Again, it is best to think of these three categories as first, as the first category, as first category one, which are basic edits that are easy to integrate. Second category is category two edits that are simple decision points and that do not require additional policy analysis or affect the project work plan or budget. And third, category three edits that do, that do affect the budget or work plan and/or that require additional policy analysis. The project team will integrate all category one changes with the October 12th public hearing draft and will track those changes in a list of changes made to the draft. We will include the category two edits in a matrix in the agenda packet as an exhibit and present the category two edits to the Planning Commission after the public hearing as decision points for deliberation. E.G., does the commission wish to direct the change we added to the draft or not? And finally, we will include as an exhibit with the agenda packet those category three changes that are proposed to be forwarded to the Sustainability Commission for further work because they will require further policy analysis or they impact the project budget or work. Because they will require further policy analysis or they impact the project budget or work plan. With these categories in mind, I'll hand it over to Alexis who will facilitate a discussion with the commission.
Thank you so much, David, and thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. Um. Up next, we have a series of four questions to go over, solicit your input. Um, we'll go ahead and start off with looks like question number two is first. Um, but first question for discussion. From a review of the baseline and background information presented in the draft climate action plan. What actions stand out as being the most impactful in helping to achieve the climate goals set by city council?
Alexis, are we gonna, is this a live action, a live fire?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you so much for asking.
Present and come back after the fact.
No, yeah, well, um, we'll go through one by one, so stop and gather all the feedback on this one. And if thoughts come up later and you want to backtrack a little bit, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, so maybe I'll just suggest. We'll try to to the commissioners, let's try to respond to the questions. I think inevitably, part of the way we frequently do things is. Um, we kind of go through the main content and then everybody typically has some comments after the fact. So there'll kind of probably be three parts here, probably respond to each of the two questions. And then there will probably be some additional pile on questions after the fact.
Sure. Would you prefer that we go through the four questions so that we can have that discussion all at once? Would that be preferable?
Yes.
Great. Happy to do that. Alrighty, so now that we've laid out our first question, we'll continue on to the next slide.
Yeah, so I I I do note that somehow in this slide deck, the commission number, question number one slide is missing. So I can read that if you'd like, Alexis.
Sure, I'll go ahead and drop it in the chat.
Do you have it in the print version, however, for some reason the electronic version is not here. Um, so commission question number one is what questions or comments from the September sixth joint commissions meeting. Related to the draft climate action plan with the planning commission like to further discuss. So what did you hear from the joint meeting that you'd like to talk about in more detail?
Wonderful.
Oh, there it is. Look at that.
Somewhere you said the magic word.
Happy it's in there either way.
You did well.
Great. Um, so our next out of order question here, I think we're back on track with question number three. From the perspective of the commission, where do you see the most significant opportunities for community change to help achieve the climate goals set by city council? And finally, question number four, are there any components of the draft climate action plan that are unclear? Or where language or graphics could be improved to help with the readability and clarity of the document? If so, what pages, paragraphs, exhibits? Is there anything you think is missing from the cap more broadly?
Okay. Yeah, let's just dive.
Dive in.
Okay, so at the joint meeting last week. Even had the best. Summary of our electrical grid situation. Remember, you remember that, starting with your panel and kind of working backwards. And I thought.
Backwards.
Yeah, backwards and all the implications associated with a new substation. You know how much capacity we have. And it occurred to me that that. A graphic of some sort to help our readers understand that piece of the challenge. Coupled with the fact that P S E electricity is not a hundred percent green. So those two. And some sort of graphical representation and the P S E part maybe show what the. Projected plan is to get it. Get off coal and make that greener. So I just thought that for public consumption. A graphic around the electrical supply, which is critical to this whole thing would be helpful.
Thank you.
Nice.
Yeah, go.
Add on to that.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I really there when I look at resources for the city, those P one pager PDFs, which I'm not sure if we use anymore after. About the development code, those are really helpful. And so that would be. That's where I would see a PDF would be really helpful. And also, I we're really, there's a real opportunity to educate. So I will just put it out there. I got a heat pump, but I was also sold another furnace. So I have a gas furnace and a heat pump because. The people right now are selling us backups and I don't know if that's to their benefit. Or if they're really needed or not. And so we need to double down on education so that we all. As people are upgrading their heat pumps to two ways, we don't also end up with gas furnaces everywhere still. So. Investing to really figure out. The ultimate goal of what we want people to do so we don't wind up still with cast furnaces.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of points that I want to add. Uh, first point was uh what you ended on, which was uh the education part of it. Uh, we need to have a clean, easy way for people to get involved to figure out what they want, what they can do. Uh, for the for climate action. Um, the second thing was that I was reading about other things which could impact. Uh, such plans and this I don't know where it would fit in categories. I thought as a as you're going through category one, two, and three, I thought it might come into category three. Uh, which is uh, there's a lot of focus right now to have uh wildlife pathways. Uh, so that they do not get uh hit by traffic or things like that. And if that if that comes up into, especially when you come up the plateau on either side. Um, that may be something that might have a significant impact or fall into category three. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact words in my head, but would fall into category three of where it were. And so I just wanted to add that caveat in there to say that we probably would have to consider. Already made item coming into category three.
Okay, great. Wildlife category or wildlife corridors as a suggestion for category three. Thank you.
Was it the the. The wildlife corridors and and the conflict with with the grid or power lines or was that. Wildlife corridors with regard to um making sure that we have appropriate vegetation and connectedness across the city.
Yes.
To 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 allow for uh appropriate passage and it's not going to result in a vehicle conflict with a.
Exactly.
With a bobcat.
The bobcat, yeah.
Exactly, which I saw the other day.
Yeah, and and as this happens, and you can see that in action, I read it, I don't know if it was this or. If it was on Facebook University or wherever it was, but I read where people are saying that the more we see bears, the more we see bobcats in our area. It basically tells us that we are we are encroaching into their space and they're figuring out ways to get in. Further and further into it. And so I see that conflict coming up more and more. I worry if this will become category three because the state would. Then enforce something that we would have to pick up and and work with no matter what we have as resources available for it. So that was the second point.
Well, I'll jump in. I think um looking at the questions, this might. A couple of the questions Alexis that you have listed there. Because I find it difficult to try to prioritize the actions, partly because there's so many. So that was part of like question number one. But um so much of the impact really deter is dependent on changing the behaviors of the residents. Right, as if like the natural gas and furnaces and so forth. And so I think part of what would help with the prioritization is understanding of all the various actions. Which ones are like the city operations controlled? We can really make a change here. We could change the fleet to electric, for example, and we could set the timeline for that. But helping people to convert to heat pumps a lot harder. We don't have full control. Um, and so in some way categorizing, uh, maybe there's absolute like it's city operations, government operations. It can be strongly influenced through code or something like that to drive change. And the best we can do is educate maybe those three categories. And a way to maybe do that is on the action items that are listed is that with some sort of icon say. You know, we can get this, we own it, or we can at best educate people on it. Uh, if at least for me, that would help in terms of, you know, reading and understanding. And how much of, you know, we're going to need to really focus on education for change versus. You know, some sort of policy changes or spending money to electrify the city's fleet, right? And that would help with our prioritization.
Yeah, one clarifying question have, sorry, did I interrupt?
Go ahead, Alexis.
Okay, one clarifying question I have related to that is the difference, you know, between um emissions coming from the city. And things that the city can more clearly control, right? So um, one of the appendices we have outlines uh city emissions. And so I, you know, my follow on question is, is this something that reduces emissions from local government operations? From, you know, the city of San Antonio's own facilities? Or are you thinking something that's more like the city has the authority to do this, no, you know, buy in or partners are required? I think that second one can get a little bit fuzzier than the former, but.
Yeah, but yes, and yes, is the answer, I think.
Okay.
Uh, and and actually, as a kind of an addendum to that, I the the climate action plan goals are for the city. And by definition, the city is all the above, the government, residents, commercial, right? And I know this could be difficult to try to parse out, but what percent of that, what is the amount that is the city? So, you know, if we have a fifty percent reduction, can the cities changes, city operation changes? Not the city overall contribute only fifteen percent of that, right? Um, and I think that gives us a sense of what, how heavy a lift it really is to affect the change. Because changing behavior across the community obviously is much more difficult to changing some of the uh. Again, the the way the fleet is operated or lighting in the city buildings or what have you, so.
I I was gonna maybe just pile on to that a little bit, Mike. Because one of my comments, and I don't, I sent some written comment, I was a bad person and did not use the JOT form because I wasn't paying attention. Sorry. So I broke, sent some written comments to to Miriam and I don't know if you've seen those Alexis, but. Nevertheless, one of them was kind of the same exact thing, which is in some ways, I feel like. There must be a better way to differentiate within the plan or at least acknowledge. The things that the city has control over, influence over, and then those things that we're just along for the ride. So P S E and the state um arguing over how and what the timeline is going to be. For them to modify their operations to achieve the state mandates for greener electric generation. That's a huge impact on, just just like you said, John, but we're kind of just along for the ride. We may be able to do a little lobbying or something, but that's a huge impact to our goal. But we have very little control or influence. But there are other things in here which are very much in our control as a city and things, um, you know, like. Programs and education and encouragement for changing the use of how we heat our homes that we have influence over. And to me, that feels lost in the plan a little bit.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you for that.
So just in response to the example, I like the example. I know the example is not exhaustive of all the scenarios, however. The one of the things that we need to keep in mind in working with P S E is that although the lobby and is really the best angle. That we also, and and we've tried to to add this theme to the plan of of of. Opening our doors to um new and unique um ways to store, generate and store electricity. One of the challenges that P S E has in going to a renewable energy sources, you know, solar, wind. That happens during the day and that happens during wind events. And where do you store that? So their 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 answer is, well, we've we put in micro gas turbines all throughout the grid. We can, when when we need it, we can crank up the micro gas turbines and and power parts of the grid. The alternative is a a large battery storage facility. But those are slightly controversial, right? I mean, so so the question then is, is. Are 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 we becoming a barrier to P S E achieving that that type of of generation? Because we are not willing to be a partner and store that energy in our city in a battery. Um, so those are the types of things that we will come across.
Yeah, but we should ask P S E if they had it like, you know, already did at Glacier and I think they were planning to do at Kenmore. Ask them how was the feedback from the residents?
The thing that we heard at the meeting that they have such plan, but that is not something that you're going to see it in the next few years.
They already implemented it as City of Glacier. Um, but I'm not sure how successful it was.
Well, I I know a lot about better storage and I will just say. To be clear, it is a current technology being implemented in many places. And the politics of it is something that, you know, is separate from the technology.
Like, I I think my point was that we we need to be, we should plant, I think we've worked on planting some language in here that will try to help get at the point that that we need to be a partner as well. Um, in order to ensure that there isn't that additional barrier or that layer of of, you know, complexity in them trying to implement something. Um, that we're asking them to implement, then we might potentially be a barrier down the line.
Yeah, I I think maybe just to double back. Well, maybe a better way to 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 articulate my concern. It's that if we were to go back and look at the plan. And I'll just throw some numbers totally made up, right? Totally made up. But if we're going to go back and we looked at it and we said. Kind of what you were getting at, Mike, the things that we have control over will influence ten percent of our emissions reduction. The things that we think we reasonably have some influence over and code from the state and others will help us is another thirty percent. That leaves us with sixty percent of our goal that we essentially have almost no control over. And I I am not opposed to having bold goals and objectives. But I think we should go into it with our eyes wide open so that we don't end up in ten years. In experiencing recrimination from people for failing to achieve our goal, when in reality, our goal was very little in our control. So at least eat, we can still have the goal and we can still, you know, look for opportunities to have influence and everything like that. But we should um be hyper aware of where we're headed and what we can do to get there. So that success or failure is not, you know, strictly a number that somebody then uses to bludgeon the the. New commission over the head over because they had no way to actually control it in the first place.
But that big, that basic question that if we wanted to kind of educate people. Is there any way that we can quantify some of these measurements? And say, okay, if you buy an E V, the impact, the positive impact that you're going to have is ten percent reduction of your total greenhouse. Uh, footprint that you create can be quantified. Are there some numbers, some general numbers? Chairman, as you're saying, that if we can quantify those numbers, even if it is general.
And I think that is a great idea for the sustainability commission to work on. Right? I mean, that's part of it is we need to hand them something that they can do and take action on and make progress and measure. But we shouldn't hand them something that that is set up for failure to begin with, just because of the way that it's communicated.
So that would be essentially a recommendation that one of the actions fairly early on. Would be to better define what the city controls and the goal related to that. Just like your, whatever the ten percent example that you gave.
That's also the possibility that you can quantify that somehow put in them. If you give a number to a person. He or she understands better that what the action that he or she is going to make, that how that would impact the goal. The other issue that you recall at the joint commission with the with the planning commission was the impact of the land use. And one of one of the item I think that I brought it up is a low impact development. I'm glad that some somebody in the report, they make reference to the low impact development. And a good example that I mentioned is a porous surface, the uh, the uh. Uh, instead of asphalt, you put a poor surface that actually drained it in the water and that 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 helps a lot. Um, but I want to go back to the education, Mr. Chairman. I think that you brought it up very eloquently. I think that that's very, very important. And particularly at the public level, they understand better if you educate and tell them that if you do this, that is what the impact is going to be.
And I and I think I see that in the plan. I mean, uh, there was a section where it was like, here's. For different things like transportation, energy usage, natural you resource, water waste and resiliency. There were things that the community could do. So I think that's a good foundation. And then the committee could come back and to to. And then the committee could come back and to to your point, uh, the point you guys have made, add numbers to that. But I was like, oh, I'm doing four or five of these. I'm doing five of five of these. So that even I was like, how am I doing? I like that part of the plan and then we just need.
There is also reference and today I saw in one of the slides and they're talking about. Uh, personal behavior. I think that lifestyle is also important, not only the behavior. Behavior is is not that really solid thing. Lifestyle is the one, for instance, the heat pump is not a behavior issue, it's a lifestyle issue. Because you you're changing lifestyle because you wanna go from air conditioning only to heat pump under. Does the lifestyle change? So I would suggest that instead of using, or maybe slash behavior slash lifestyle modifications.
So stepping back just a second, I think one of the most critical pieces of this plan is it's designated as a living plan. Because we know technology is gonna change the horizon out there. There's just so many unknowns, so much we don't directly. Or even indirectly control. So I think that basis, part of the education is. This is gonna change. The city is gonna modify this. I think you said on an annual basis. Rose has job security for. So I I think we're not gonna be able to solve every problem and address every issue in this first iteration. But knowing that it's a living document and gonna be continually worked on going forward. Gives us a little bit of breathing room.
Directly solid.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, I do have a another couple of comments and that these, this kind of tie. So one was, one of the questions is about figures. And on page eight, there's the uh, the sort of the 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 one that, you know, has all the colors and all that. What confuses me about this is if I look at it, the way it's shown, it looks like. The cap actions in future reductions start to take effect around twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty, and all the other benefits. Come from various Washington state or federal programs. And it may just be the way this thing is created. Um, but it does seem to imply that we don't get any benefits from our actions until twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty. And it also uh illustrates how important. Washington state and federal programs are towards are being able to meet goals, right? Uh, it's just like we're talking about PSC and so forth, right? So one other thought that's tied to this, uh, and maybe, you know, I'll be interested in here if I'm misinterpreting the figure at all, but. Is that uh, on the actions, um, there is a list, I forget if it's appendix H or one of those. But there's one that talks about all the various partnerships and programs. And it would be maybe beneficial for those who are working towards how do we put the actions in, you know, implement the actions. At where there might be funding or other partnerships or support. So right now I could take a look at the actions and then I could look, you know, many, many pages later and see that there's these various programs. How can I might be able to leverage the programs to accomplish the actions? So there are really two points there. One is that, you know, that tie in, uh, that might be helpful to see where we would get help implementing the cap. And then the other, I I still, like I said, get a bit confused by that uh, figure three on the emissions projection. So if somebody could help me with that, I would welcome that.
Yeah, um, both great comments. I think the, you know, the first one, that's a little bit more straightforward. You know, for the various partnerships and programs, it sounds like you're familiar with the appendix that does this. Um, something that I think might help is essentially when we introduce each of these topic areas to say, um, you know. For a list of potential partners and funding opportunities, go to page XX in appendix, you know, I forgot which appendix it is, but call it appendix C. Um, so I think that's something we can pretty, you know, pretty clearly address. I think that's a very good point. We can point people in the right direction. Um, and then for the wedge diagram on page eight, your interpretation makes a lot of sense. Um, what we have done here when we completed the calculations was we essentially, you know, took credit for um, state and federal programs first. So the idea behind this is that it's really um meant to highlight what remains for the city of San Amish. So I think what we're kind of trying to communicate more so here is that. You know, to your point, exactly how far these state and federal programs are going to take the city. And then that last wedge, you know, I I understand you thinking that city of San Amish actions kick in, but I think. That section is a little bit more representative of almost the gap that the city of San Amish is going to have to fill. Um, because that's where these city and state actions, you know, have kind of reached their um, their saturation or their. The current limits of their efficiency as understood. So I I hope that clears things up. We could probably add some language here to help clarify the interpretation. I feel like this is, you know, one of those diagrams where if you look at the part that's um, in dark ink, you see one figure. And if you look at the part in light ink, you see something a little bit different. So maybe just calling that out could help clarify.
Yeah, and and for me personally, that would be sufficient because I'm pretty comfortable with these kinds of diagrams and what it's trying to illustrate. And I I was making a point maybe a little facetiously about, oh, nothing that we do will kick in until, you know, twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty. Um, so I I I get what you're saying, but maybe some verbiage or something like that that would say. Cause I think I'm sure the federal state programs don't kick in immediately either, so it's it's gonna be a bit of a mix, hard to show on a diagram, so.
Yeah, I would, I would say though, Mike, that I, that was one of my comments when I saw this as well, is that. The concern I have about it is that, um, and this was in like written comments a little bit. Inevitably, one of the challenges with these kinds of actions are the the politics and the naysayers. And for somebody to look at this, cause there'll be budget associated with this. And somebody looks at this graph and says, you mean between now and twenty thirty, we're gonna spend X and accomplish nothing? Right? That's one of the, one of the risks of the way this kind of is portrayed. And it might be good to to try to anticipate that kind of a comment and, you know. The per, try to counteract that a little bit because, I mean, we're gonna, we're absolutely gonna spend money on on people and studies and consultants and. And probably some actions, hopefully putting some solar panels up and doing, you know, buying some equipment and whatever. And those things will actually contribute to an improvement in our reduction in greenhouse gases. You know, so if there is a, there is a, an action and a result, this graph doesn't show that very well. And so you gotta look out for helping consultants yourselves and and our staff. With anticipating the kinds of feedback they'll get about that. If we're gonna spend money, we need to have something to show for it. And this graph kind of doesn't help that argument very well.
Mm hmm, yeah, thank you. Really appreciate those comments.
Not too high long. Uh, but this is, this is a, as we were talking, I was starting to realize that that, you know. We've been so much into the graph and looking at it, it feels so natural of what we are seeing. We can see what we're gonna do and impact. But if you just step a step away from it, like what I do, start to ask, when I heard all these comments. Was that is is there a risk over here that somebody would say, ah, San Amish? It's just a sliver of things that we can, that we do is gonna have an impact. It looks like it's all state, it's all somebody else who has to do the thing. So I might as well just be in my own vehicle and not try to do something for uh, for the climate action. Because it's, it it might, what's the big difference if changes from one point uh, seven percent to one point six percent? I don't know. I I don't care about it. So does it send that negative uh connotation to say that? We directly have an impact of only this small sliver. Uh, that's there. And should we think of it in another storyline to say each and everything that you do is something else? And that in, the answer to that could be that we may not even come with this graph when we explain it to the city or the the people in the city. But that's something to consider because as I, as I was talking, I was thinking, oh my God, if somebody reads it that way, then. There's no reason for us to do this. And the reason I thought of that was because the first time I went to its regular size. I've always been zooming in, right? I went first for the regular size and then I looked at the regular size and I thought, oh my, this might be a question that might come up and people might. Think that we are undercutting our message by doing this. Just of, just something to think about. It's an action for me to go back and figure out how to represent it, but.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think all of these comments are so important because this is such a um foundational tool. In understanding why the cap is being created, what its role is and how it plays into these larger um forces at work. So really, really grateful to hear this from you all, particularly, you know, this kind of seeing around the corner, how um, it'll be interpreted. This is incredibly valuable.
Maybe I'll um mention a couple of other ones that I had. Uh, I agreed with Carrie's comment about finding a better way to summarize some of this. I mean, I had a couple of ideas, but certainly a um, a kind of one pager, an A four, whatever it is. That becomes the poster for for the whole thing. At least the parts that we're really emphasizing, I think is gonna be a necessity. And, you know, it's gonna have to be something that lots of people can look at for two minutes and understand what's going on. Um, maybe that's a good action for the for the new commission. Um, I didn't, one of the things that I didn't really, and and there's a lot here, so I probably passed over it. But um, it seems like there should be a greater language emphasis on working with. The various mass transit options, um, King County Metro, Sound Transit, whatever, to figure out. Cause if we're gonna really reduce vehicle miles traveled and by proxy, then reduce our greenhouse gas contribution. And that's gonna require mass transit. And there are some references in here to mass transit at centers where there's density and that's, that's great. But it requires us to actually, we're we're not gonna have, well, maybe we could locally, but probably we're not gonna have the majority of those pieces of mass transit. So that requires us to take an action, which we've tried in the past and need to try again, to be more proactively engaged with. King County Metro in particular and say, okay, what can we do now? Finally, the sound transit stations are open up in Redmond, then how are we gonna improve bus service? So that people will actually ride it and it becomes useful. I don't think I saw that sort of next step in here anywhere. Or even other than the reference to centers and density, I don't think I saw it. So maybe I missed it. If it's there, never mind, but if it's not there, I think it should be.
The general language is there, but doesn't get into that detail as far as what would be the strategy, strategy that the city can pursue. To 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 get into some discussion with this King County Metro and the Sound Transit, that one I've seen that in the past have suggested. Number of times, approach these agencies and work on something that they would actually make some investment in the infrastructure. Not only to serve the city as far as the land use and development, but also provide a connection to regional transportation system. Particularly in the light of the, the new light rail that is coming to Redmond. So the general language is there, but. Yeah, I I think that we have to take one step further and and recognize the importance of of the importance of the negotiation between the city. And the participation in city with the regional bodies, like King County Metro, Sound Transit and Washington State Department of Transportation. So that should be very.
And I think maybe to clarify my comment a little bit. I believe that in the past, the city has struggled with getting the attention of, in particular, King County Metro. Um, but we shouldn't let that past history restrain restrain us from approaching them again as the town center. Gets built because I have suspicion, I'm assuming, part of their objections to adding bus services. There's not good places to have bus stops and good density and all that, but that's going to develop. And so as it does, in parallel, we need to be working with them, not waiting until, you know, oh, they just don't want to talk to us and. Wait till the last minute. We need to be working on that in advance and probably are, but um, it probably needs to be in the plan.
I think that one of, one of the issues for this transmission, particularly as far as sound transit and King County Metro. We have to bring to their attention that there's a latent demand in the city. You're talking about a population of sixty thousand, you're talking about a lot of people that they don't work in here because there's not that much employment center here. And everybody's commuting and and bring to their attention that, hey, you have a latent demand that you can take advantage of. By providing the service, but we we we're willing to work with you to uh, improve the transportation. That as a part of the transportation network, we would facilitate the movement of the transit vehicles. That is something that really needs, is is unfortunate. I don't know if you heard, I think that the the, we had two bus routes, one of them just recently canceled.
Canceled, yeah, two fourteen.
And does that go to that comment on the first slide? I I the uh, about uh, one of the suggestion, it was one of the feedbacks in the plan. To spend, yeah, under general, no. Yeah, that first one, does it relate back to this one where I read that in the the draft for last week? And you brought it up again here is. And how, can you explain this feedback a little bit more? Is is that what we're talking about that's missing in terms of? Building it more into the plan?
So this was a comment received from a CAG member. Public transportation, e-bikes and walkability must be prioritized rather than simply replacing vehicles with EVs. I think the the point here is it's a lifestyle thing and it's a behavioral change that E- EVs still use energy. And really depends on where that energy sourced from. Um, staff, this one, we 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 chug a little bit with this next one. Um, staff and council members should use public transit and e-bikes or walk between city locations. Um, so we have an MOC, I'll walk to the MOC, I guess. But um, the point, point, point taken, um, because that.
After elaborate.
We, yeah, we 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 want to showcase the behavior that we we think is gonna make us successful, right?
So does this, yeah, so does this tie into what we were just talking about and by the way to help promote it more in the plan?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think the the. Prioritizing it, you know, King County Trail, for example, the East Lake Spanish Trail, it's about to open. Uh, when they designed it, it was designed with commute in mind, with bike commuting to the the light rail station in mind. And like you, we had many debates about the width of the trail back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. And they ultimately built the width they felt they needed based on their forecasted volume for commuting. And I think e-bikes are becoming a thing, so they're starting to see the the trips increase. So those are the types of things. We are working on a transit master plan. Um, so that will address largely how to get meaningful transit to the city. Um, so that one, it'd be great to have that cross link into this plan to show that there is a connection. Because we do need public transit um as an alternative instead of just buying uh, electric cars.
Can you give us a little bit more details on the master plan for the transportation?
Um, I I wish I was more familiar with it. That's a different department working on it. Um, and it is. I I believe it's about to be daylighted to the city council. I'd have to look at the details. I I could, I could as a follow up, send out the status of that. Um, but it is something that a lot of work has been put into. And I think just add on to that, is scheduled to come before the planning commission in October, November, if I'm remembering the dates correctly, but I can follow up with an email. Uh, um, the dates they anticipate coming.
So just to add more to science and chairman's, you know, comments. Maybe we should make that as a goal to have like, you know, relationship with Sound Transit and King County Metro and see what we can improve.
And one of our quandaries is someone might change their behavior and take more mass transit. But to do that, they drive to the transit center in Issaquah. You know, so we don't get the credit for their behavior change in the reduction.
I think the reason they drive to Issaquah Transit Center is because we don't have enough buses coming to San Amish. If if that changes, people won't park here and go.
But because we're a commuter basis, we're still gonna have that behavior where. The commute out of our community possibly have savings somewhere else and we don't get to count it.
Well, you can make some changes in the behavior if you provide that infrastructure. That provides a an efficient public transportation, not necessarily in process, but in form of HOV lanes. And one of the thing that I suggested to the council a number of times is that let's negotiate with the King County Metro and Sound Transit and say, hey. If you come and make make investment on a two twenty eighth Harley Way, widen it, we'll give you the uh, the uh. We're willing to accept it in HOV lane to be a part of that infrastructure. So money will become from them and we will benefit from it because you provide for HOV lane, which would reduce so. A single vehicle occupancy use. So that, because you know, the reason that two two twenty eighth Harley Way has not been improved. Because my God, now we're looking at something like two hundred, two hundred million, something like that. The city doesn't have that for the next ten, twenty years, probably. We're not gonna have that. But if you approach that with the understanding that you're gonna be improving. The greenhouse uh, uh, gas emission by providing for public transportation, that would work. And it kind of is a win-win situation both for the city, for the residents and for the King County Metro, Sound Transit. Because this becomes a feeder system. Because this becomes a feeder system today.
So bottom line of that is, I do think that the plan should have a good tie to the. Transportation master plan, because they're they're very dependent on each other. Um one other one that is actually the one thing, and I commented on this in our joint with the Parks Commission meeting. So this is just a rehash of what I said, but um I do really think that the the. The thing that gives me the most heartburn is this, the issue that Carrie brought up, which is the, you know, the legacy. Natural gas heating and water heating in the houses in the city. And the way that the graph on the plan page ten kind of displays that and and I. I don't, the problem is I brought this same comment last time and didn't have a good answer. I do think that maybe. One of the things is that um you asked, what is the, you know, most important that could have the most impact on our. On our ability to make a difference. Asking that the the new commission prioritize this as one of their top priorities. To develop ideas for strategies, education, programs, whatever it is. So that over the course of the next, you know, seven years to twenty thirty and and um twenty five years. Beyond that, but to to address this particular issue, because it just stands out like a sore thumb as the one thing that, you know. Oh, yeah, we're, our goal is to get a reduction of ninety eight percent, but we have no idea what we're gonna do with that. Twenty percent that's just sitting there on that graph right there. Um so I don't, that's probably just a, we can't solve it now, but we should. We should highlight it as one of the highest priority action items for the next few steps in the actions moving forward.
So we, that is consistent with feedback from the community advisory group. Um that one, one thing that the the group did talk a lot about was. Um electrification and how to make that conversion from natural gas to electric. Um and one of the challenges at that time was was the legal uh cloud that surrounded being able to mandate it. The the, that seems to be changing and based on uh community advisory group direction. We did change the language to mandate. Um the public comment tonight speaks to that. Um Mr. Ritter believes we should go one step further and and try to drive it down into more smaller scale. The the language currently reads mandate for for new, uh mandate for for um large renovation and retrofit. Um but that, then you get down into the more, the smaller scale, and the question is whether. You can mandate it there, we're still studying that, so we're gonna definitely wanna keep looking at that. Uh because, you know, at that point, it's the number of, for example, new furnaces that we get that are just straight replacement furnaces that don't. They're not associated with the major renovation of a home. Um or a uh hot water tank replacement, that's the example we used the other day, but if you look across at. You know, twenty thousand residences, well, what, how many of those commit a year for that type of life cycle replacement? Well, that's a big opportunity if we're able to mandate that when somebody is going through that. Process of of life cycle replacement, that they electrify. Um so but we're we're not sure that we can mandate at that level. There's some uncertainty there, so we'll keep looking into that, that's something I do agree that the. Sustainability Commission should take up as a priority, we should be working with our legal counsel to understand the the risks of. Of mandating uh electrification at that level, however. That also goes hand in hand with something else you're talking about tonight, which is the education component, because. What is the the saying, I've said it before, is culture reads strategy for breakfast, and if, and if you have a strategy that is to mandate it. And you think that it's just going to happen, um but people aren't educated on the reason why, well, that will come come unraveled on you very quickly. So we do need to have a very strong educational campaign and in in advance of in. In partnership with a a another campaign to to require people to make the right choice.
Yeah, I'd like to build on that a little bit. Um and that's about the education. Uh the graphs here about the amount of natural gas usage and how impactful that is to the overall. Greenhouse gas production for the city is is really stark. I didn't know that. I've got a furnace coming up for replacement. I can't tell without, if I didn't know this information, I might have just replaced it in kind, simple to do, right? Um I don't know if I would have done like Carrie and researched on the, you know, heat pumps and all of that.
Well, well, the other thing you gotta realize is when the people that sell you this equipment come out to sell it to you. They're gonna give you the opposite message of what we're talking about.
Right.
Oh, yeah, so.
We want the city to be first, we want the city message.
Well, so the so the point there is how important that education is, and that can influence even if you. Have things like mandates, what what people will do. And then the other thing I noticed is, uh this is on page twenty two, Carrie, earlier, you mentioned about the what community members can do. Uh and this is specifically about emissions, gas emissions in your house. Although it talks about energy efficient appliances, it doesn't actually like strike me like in the face. Get rid of your gas heater. Like, I think that probably should be one here. Um unless I'm missing how I'm reading some of these, like it's a gas heater, it's not LED lights. It's not winter, weatherization upgrades, so we should probably add that one.
It's a good one, yeah, so I do see Miriam has her hand up.
I was just gonna mention that there's also kind of an equity lens to think about as you're considering mandating some of these things too, right? Because as you have people with limited flexible income that have to replace something, they're gonna opt for the cheapest option that they can, you know. Afford and work with. Um and so I didn't wanna. Um it's obviously up to you all, but I did think there was a suggestion, I believe it was from one of the CAG members for a new action. That kind of helped address that, so I think it's something to kind of keep in the back of your head as you're reviewing the different actions. Um how it fits in to people with different economic situations.
And it's not just people that have economic difficulties, everybody else, for the most part, is gonna have a hard time choosing a more expensive option. And if we mandate it, then they're gonna, some of those people who have the ability to have influence. Will also not be very happy because we're forcing them to spend more money, so, yeah, I mean, equity aside, everybody. Is gonna have an issue if they have to spend an extra, whatever it is, right, right now. In the future, that probably won't be the case, but in the near term, probably will be.
Are we looking into the uh? The issue of the potential federal funding into some of these uh changes?
That what, that I believe is represented in the plan as actions as to work, work, continue to work on identifying grants and partnerships. Um you know, one example is, um there there's a um interlocal on the, with other cities. That we could join that would enable us to be more attractive for federal funding or grant dollars, right? So so making sure we're working with all the partners and identifying all the funding options and finding out how we can be. Attractive and competitive to those those uh.
Specifically, was talking about the thing that Congress approved last year that provides for. EV, provides for changing the windows and all that, there's some funding right now available, it's not. I don't think it's granted, it's money, free money that is given to the citizen if they wanna kind of upgrade their. Their heating system. Are these have been looked at as a part of instead of mandate, you can say, hey, these are available money if you if you're willing to do this. This is how much federal government would pay you to do that. Can we as a part of education, can we list that and can put that as a part of the overall strategies that. We wanted to get a support from the community?
I think the language used to read, uh I see Miriam has her hand up, so I just, I'll let her.
I was just gonna say, um I've seen multiple actions where we do call out. Highlighting different rebates and incentive programs that are available to individual citizens, so I think it was just kind of translating that into whatever materials. And outreach campaigns are developed to ensure that that messaging is very clear and. That we help people navigate those processes, because sometimes they can be complicated.
And are these fundings, at least federal federal funding, are they, do they have sunsets?
Often, yes, um I'm not exactly, you know, it's gonna vary program by program, but um. You know, that's part of the reason why in the appendix, we kind of have funding opportunities and potential partners rather than specific programs. Um they all have different cycles, so it's gonna be highly dependent on the individual program.
I know that it's complicated, because I looked briefly at changing out my gas furnace. The heat pump to see what the federal subsidy was, but there's income. And I had to dig to find that information, so again, back to Carrie's one pagers. Um you know. You've got a permit in for a hot water tank. Right now, um heat pump, hot water tank costs three times as much as another one, but. What rebates are available. Hard to know. Uh you know, there's staff capacity issues to keep track of all of that stuff. And this is a big issue.
For that reason, I think local partners and programs are some of the best opportunities here. Um uh I, you know, I have to refer to some of the appendix pages and notes that we have to name names, but. Um for local partners, you know, programs that are run through organizations like P S E. That's gonna offer a lot more flexibility than something like a federal or even state level program, so. Definitely hear you there, there are some options, but it gets complicated really fast, I agree.
I have one other comment, so I was looking at the the questions, I was trying to be true to answering questions, but but they talk about, like, what are the priorities? What do you see significance and so forth? I wanna add one that's just a little bit like a plug for, at the very end, it talks about resiliency. And I know that's not tied directly to necessarily to the the goals around greenhouse gas emission and vehicle miles traveled, those are easy to. Quote unquote, easier to measure, but um since this is a climate action plan. And climate will affect us in many ways, and it's great to be, and it's important to be proactive to try to, you know, address the greenhouse gas and so forth. Um it will be inevitable, that at least for a while, we're gonna have to deal with greater heat and stronger storms. So I'm glad to see resiliency in here, and I hope in the focus on all of the other things that we've talked about. That we don't lose sight of that, and we are proactive, because it takes a lot of time to put some of the resiliency uh. You know, infrastructure in place. So just a side light there, because we we've kind of passed over that a fair bit, it's towards the end, so it's easy to do, but.
And I I'd say the words, oh, go ahead, Alexis.
I was just gonna say, I agree with that, glad to hear that, um this is something that's also going to show up in the comprehensive plans. Uh climate chapter, there's uh required now to have a sub element that's more addressing greenhouse gas emissions. And one that's specifically addressing resiliency, and so this was a really great opportunity to start to build out that framework. That's also gonna show up in the comprehensive plan as well.
I was gonna add that there are many local conversations that we need to have as a community related to resiliency. The the classic one is the conflict between our desire to have, you know, a robust tree canopy and the. The character of the community being rooted in its in its forested nature. Um but then at the same time, you need to have a clear zone around electrical wires, so that in the event of a storm. Trees don't fall and hit those wires and and you know, the the number of tree strikes in a storm. Correlates directly to the 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 utility's ability to get the service back online. Um so, you know, if we can reduce down, you know, maybe that's a metric we should have is. For resiliency in the end, that we can work on with the Sustainability Commission is the the number of tree strikes is reduced. I think, you know, that.
Number of times we lose power.
Yeah, um and the duration of outage, right? And I I think, you know, most, most people can withstand, uh you know, four to six hour outage, it's not a big deal. Just unopen your fridge or freezer, you're good. Um and but but when it starts to get into multiple days, well, you better hope you didn't just get home from Costco. Is it, it's a big impact financially.
And I think it comes up a lot in the community, so I think having a discussion around that would could actually stimulate engagement with the community.
And there's plenty of history, and I would say in the last twenty years, we've had at least three incidents. My neighborhood, we were out for five to seven days.
And that that's where the 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 uh vendors who sell the heating equipment are coming and saying, hey. You might need to add a a backup gas furnace. Um and and if we could get the the incident of outage down and the resilience established. That wouldn't be something that would really be as needed, you, maybe if it goes out for a couple of days once in a while. It'd be an inconvenience, but for seven days in the middle of winter. I always remember, what was it, the two thousand eight windstorms, two thousand seven windstorms?
Eleven, the Hanukkah Day storm in eleven.
That's the one, yeah, that was brutal.
That brings up the question, David, that you can answer, is that do we have in our development regulations that? When the developer comes along the publicly dedicated right away streets, of course, based on the faction classification. That they're obligated at their expense to underground utilities, particularly the power. So we generally, over a year, over period of a time, we will have. Uh as a matter of fact, this was brought up last time, and somebody mentioned about Seattle, why they don't have that much of problem. Because most of the, most of the power lines are underground. Do we have any regulation, or do we have to kind of as part of this, update our regulations that forces developers?
Yeah, that's a really interesting one, so the development that happens on the private property component is undergrounded. You'll notice that new subdivisions that go in, they're undergrounded, um new connections. Frontage where there is an existing transmission or underbuild um distribution line. Is something that is right, the undergrounding there is is the cost share is regulated by the. Um you, the um Utility and Transportation Commission. And there, the the issue there is that it then requires that the the cost of that be pushed back on the consumer. And that ultimately is something P S E ends up billing the whole consumer base for for that, that improvement to be made. Um so it's more challenging because of the structure around um how those costs are 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 shared.
So it may or may not happen when the development is taking place.
It's not likely to happen unless P S E has a program where they're already looking to underground it. Or there is a future city improvement being made to that roadway where it will be undergrounded in the future, then they might. Uh they might underground it at that point. Um but generally speaking, we're not likely to see much of our existing specifically transmission. Um and also our underbuild, just because of the sheer cost of doing so.
Yeah, and that's where we're most vulnerable in the really big storms, you take out a transmission line and.
The whole neighborhood.
There's too much of a stress, too, too much of it, uh what is the word? Uh that tap into the mitigation fund that you collect from the developer to pay for that.
Yeah, I I maybe I could, I would just say that over the years. That I've been involved in any of this, this topic's been discussed on a very regular basis. But I've really never heard it get past the sort of this level, you know? Um so it may be a good thing to assign to the commission or to somebody. To actually dig into it further as part of resilience, because there's a lot of work that I think could be done, working with P S E to understand. You know, we say, oh, overhead lines and trees and, you know, that's true, but if there's a. If there are certain areas of the city that are more vulnerable, that have a history of greater problems. Maybe we start to narrow down what the what the problem re- really actually is. And so when we have these discussions about whether it's money or who's affected or whatever, we're talking about the right thing. Um because we have overhead lines on two twenty eighth, I think that's a travesty, but it is what it is. And those are way up high, and there's almost no trees around them, those are not a problem, they're not gonna get knocked down. But there's ones along Inwood Hill Road, absolutely, and East Lake Spanish Parkway, yeah, it looks to me like they are. So somebody doing some work to start to narrow this conversation into something that we could put our arms around and say, can we do something or not? Would be a good step instead of the kind of hand waving that's been done for many years.
So David, question on that, um. You know, the old saying is conduits cheap, so if you've got the ground open for, say, a subdivision. And you require them to put the conduit in. Not necessarily underground the the wire, but have the facility ready to go so they can pull it. When we get there.
In the frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah, ma- make that a uh design requirement or a a public works.
Right.
Frontage design requirement, but yeah, that would require collaboration with P S E and the right standard, and then.
Right.
So you you, I I I like the idea, the spirit of the idea.
We did that in Batho, exactly. We put that as a condition of goal, conduit, plain color.
I I will say, I I live in a neighborhood that's been undergrounded, and our power went out for several days because tree roots got into the conduit. I, I will say, I, I live in a neighborhood that's been undergrounded and our power went out for several days because tree roots got into the conduit. Not a perfect solution, but.
They're just big weeds.
Okay, uh, other comments?
Yeah, I have one last comment too. Uh, that was uh, for the uh, commi- for the commission to uh, recommend. Uh, we've, there's been some good work done on waste management. We have a plan of waste diversion of seventy percent sink. And um, right now we are somewhere on sixty percent or just over sixty percent, something like that. Uh, which means that we still have to go about ten percent. End of the decade. That's seems like an easy goal, but it's actually not an easy goal. Uh, so that'll be something that we will have to take up as a priority. So they're to have to do that. And it's a very unglamorous one to work on. We won't recommend that. Because right, all as a CAD. Really come to recommendations. And I'm being very harsh when I say that. There has to be some real uh, steps to get to seventy percent.
So now I'm wondering which ones are the glamorous? One last comment I have is uh, one of the things I think is a challenge here. Is and every single meeting and uh, that I've been involved in so far, it's kind, it's been uh, an issue and that is. This pretty quickly turns into all things for all people, all the time, for everywhere and everything, you know? I mean, there's always some, well, this could be tied into this and this could be tied into this and this could be tied into this. And I think as we move forward in the process of refining this, finalizing it, handing it off. That's kind of where we started. What's the most important? I do think there needs to be um, an effort to start to scale this down to something that's more manageable. So that we're focusing what limited resources we do have available or become available on the right things. Um, and also make sure that there's not too much overlap. Between things like the transportation master plan or the parks commission working on something or somebody else. Working on something because this particular topic tends to be a, a catchall for almost anything and everything. And there's a risk there that we get so diluted trying to do so many things. That we don't actually focus what resources we have on the right things that actually make a difference. So making that sort of a. Rules of engagement for this plan, I think would be an important uh, thing to, to point out, to highlight and to use as a. Here's part of the instructions as we hand it off to other people that, you know. This is what other people are doing. This is what you're entrusted to do and here's the priorities. Otherwise. I fear that this will be one of those where it's a great idea. It's absolutely essential. And people will become so overwhelmed and work and work and work and work and spin their wheels because everybody thinks there's so many things that need to be accomplished. So we gotta put some brackets around it. Otherwise, people will never be able to actually be productive.
So there's, there seems to be two ways to achieve that with this work that we're doing. One is to find a way to thread that into the plan itself. Maybe an introductory letter that's attached to the top of it or something. That identifies, you know, these are the priorities that we, we as a, as a city want to see carried forward. The other is, is part of the letter of recommendation that, that you all pass off to the city council. You could make a recommendation on what the priorities are and make a recommendation that when the city council. Charters the, the, the sustainability commission and sets the work plan in November and December. Following your work, that these be the first items on the sustainability commission's work plan. Um, to take on. So there, there's two ways to achieve that. I mean, the, the, the latter is simpler. The, the first, eh, 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 you know, we'll, we'll end up talking more about it later, which could be a good thing. Oh, Miriam.
I'm gonna highlight a way to be maybe. Um, so in appendix H, we did shade. Certain actions that are going to be higher impact in terms of meeting some of our G H G reduction. Our emission reduction goals, um, as well as items that are also kind of foundational for building. Our progress and our, our actions in the future. Um, so as you guys are doing your reviews. Trying to look for those ones that are shaded in a slightly darker color and seeing if those resonate with you all, if you agree with that prioritization. If there's others that should be prioritized, I think we can also go through and start to think of it also through the lens of. Ones that are going to be city controlled versus city influenced versus, you know, the public's kind of. Lifestyle behavioral changes and start designating those a little bit as well to help. Maybe we can update that mechanism column to show. The city controlled, city influenced, public. Um, behavioral lifestyle changes kind of thing.
What appendix you were talking about?
H is the last one in the document. And you can see on this example that's on screen right now. So T L U four point one is shaded just slightly. We might need to darken that just a little bit so it stands out more. Um, and I'm happy to send a list over of those ones if that would be helpful in your review.
Shows them on this screen, but not that screen.
Barely see it.
But you can see it on my screen when it, when it does pop up. Yeah, interesting. Might just be the.
So that they're not all highlighted there like on that screen?
The left bar is supposed to be like darker.
So Miriam, I think. A summary of that for our discussion and review would be really helpful, you know, two pager.
Sure, that's not a problem. I'm happy to send that over.
Would really like to ask the commissioners that for our discussion at the public hearing, if we could somehow. Agree on a, a part of what could go into the recommendation letter, as kind of David described it as. You know, we recommend this plan and further, we recommend the following, the council consider. The following priorities and list. I mean, it shouldn't be too deep into the weeds, but that'll be something for us to figure out is how do we describe that in a one paragraph way? You know, maybe it's as simple as greenhouse gas reduction strategies will be the primary. We anticipate it will be the primary focus for the first, you know, two years or something like that. Um, it may be that simple or maybe more than that, but. It can't be too far into the, into the details, but I think that would be very valuable because it gives. The council something to talk about and the new commission something that, you know, if it gets approved that way to grab a hold of and say. This is our mandate because we're working on these things, but this is the priority. But that will require everybody to think about that ahead of time and bring kind of what you think the answer to that is.
Are we asking staff to put the list of the recommendations and give it to us and comment on?
Yeah, I think Miriam's gonna give us the summary of what's.
Okay.
In there highlighted right now, but I think we have to decide. You know, because I, I don't, I wasn't able to catch on to that. So maybe the ones that are highlighted is twenty two out of hundred and twelve. I don't, right? Well, that's, it needs to be probably simpler than that in a recommendation letter and probably more high level. That's my perception at least.
Recommendation letter can always refer back to the appendancy for specific detail.
In a lot of ways, it feels like the, that the sustainability commission needs a mandate. And so what is that mandate? It needs to come from the council, but we could help push it in that direction.
You mean priority or the mandate? Or both?
Yeah, mandate.
Or mandate may or may not include priority. And it could be list of the things, but we wanted also have the mandate, but then prioritize it.
In, in my imagining of how those words get used, the mandate would be, here's the plan, start here. This is what's most important.
Okay. That makes sense.
So i- i- in listening to this, this has been a really great conversation and I, I wanted to highlight that I think. You know, the, the plan is doing its job because I think one of the realizations that, that's coming, you might have already had this, this understanding prior to this meeting. Some of, some of you are very knowledgeable on these topics. Um, is that really that, that it's the, it's the home heating? That is one of the biggest issues for the city and it's the vehicle miles traveled and, and, and trying to get out of single occupancy vehicles. And trying to electrify your vehicle are, are really the, the biggest things. So i- if you were to think of it in terms of, of that, in, in priority is. Um, a public awareness campaign, outreach, education, finding, like I heard, finding partnerships for funding. You know, if there's federal funding, making sure that we're being, we're, we're helping pair people up with the, the right programs and help clarify for them. When they might be eligible for them, those types of things. Um, it's partnerships with the utility. Really, that are really important to make sure that we've got capacity, if we are electrifying and making those jumps. So. With that in mind, that might be, that's just a, a suggestion of, of a, I, I heard that out of this conversation that that's a really. Big priority is if we're going to take on that, that profile, that or that, that bar in the, in the table. And try and shrink that down, that, that's really where we need to start. Um, because that's one of the biggest areas of emissions. That, that the city collectively, the community, the city, the citizens are responsible for. As opposed to it being federal, state, county.
And one of the most exciting things right now is the products are out there. Like you just have to pair them up. Opposed to being like a hard stretch or them being rare or still kind of elusive. We have E Vs, we have new heat pumps.
Solar.
Yeah, just gotta put people together with them.
Okay, anything else?
So we had, just let me just get back in here. Um, so the last slide. Climate action plan finalization. But to wrap up, we wanted to highlight the next steps. We will be reviewing all the feedback you provided. So that we can get you an updated draft for the public hearing and planning commission recommendation of the city council on October twelfth. The project team will integrate all category one changes received through next Tuesday. Again, those are simple changes that can be easily integrated into the draft. Uh, and we will track those changes in a matrix showing where the changes were made to the draft. The project team will also include the category two edits, which are those that are more complex that require a decision point and direction from the commission. That, that are received through September nineteenth as a matrix i- in the agenda packet for the twelfth. And present the category two edits so the planning commission on October twelfth, um, as decision points as part of your deliberation. Um, finally, the project team will include as an exhibit with the agenda packet, those category three changes. That are proposed to be forwarded to the sustainability commission for further work. Because they require further policy analysis or impact the project budget, project budget or work plan. Um, with these categories in mind, um, we, we want to make sure that you're, you're filling out the JOT form. And if you need the JOT form, we sent out to you again, please feel free to reach out. Stuff gets buried in email. We, we get it. Um, and, and let us know if you have any questions on any of the, the points in the plan itself or the. Questions following up from this conversation tonight, we're more than happy to, to, you know, meet with you in person or have a phone conversation. As you're working on continued review of the plan and, and adding any of your comments or, or proposed changes to the JOT form.
All right. Thanks, Miriam. Thanks, Alexis. Thank you, David.
Thank you all so much. It's been a pleasure. Really appreciate all the feedback and all the thought that goes into reviewing. I know the document is incredibly long. Um, the results were a long process and we're so grateful to have your input.
We're not done yet. All right, thanks. Um, let's go ahead and do our, I'm assuming we can move on. Anything else? Nope. Okay, let's do a public comment, agenda related public comment. So in the room, agenda related public comment.
You get seven minutes now.
No, I mean, I, uh. I hope that the points that were made at some point will be. Seriously considered to be added to the plan. I want to make sure they're in the record. And, you know, it's up to policymakers to decide. You know, how important it is to have a, a, a solid, good starting point on our transportation. Emissions count. So that we can accurately compare going forward. We can't do that. The way we're doing it now is uh. A year from now, we will see no difference, even if we double. The number of E Vs, we will see no difference in the emissions. From my point of view, that doesn't work.
Thanks, Phil. Mary?
Sure, if, if, if I could respond to that just briefly. So, so we, we, we do hear what, what Phil Ritter is saying. Um, we have been working with the state department of licensing to pull data on the, the makeup of breakdown of vehicle types in the city. Um, and we are looking at, we, we would like to make that edit prior to the, the public hearing draft. So push it out with the public hearing draft. We're waiting for a data report back from the state department of licensing, which is taking a little longer than we would like. Um, but what we'll be doing is we're, we're going to be amending the, the vehicle emission profile and we, we will be including. The breakdown of the percentage of vehicles in Sammamish at that date point, I think it was twenty nineteen, I, I could be wrong. Um, which were um, internal combustion engine vehicles versus those that are internal combustion hybrid vehicles. Versus those that are internal combustion hybrid plug-in vehicles versus those that are electric vehicles. And each of those vehicles has a different emission profile that goes along with it. And we'll be breaking down that, that profile differently based on vehicle miles. What we have now is a report out from our vehicle, from our, our transportation model that is just vehicle miles traveled in the city. But if we can understand the percentage of vehicles that are being operated, then we can break it down into those categories and understand emissions. It is something that we do want to track going forward. The city council has expressed that. We would like to have that edit included. We're working on that. We agree with what Phil Ritter is asking us to do and just as soon as we have that data available, we'll. Make that translation and, and replace that graphic with the updated version and add some additional notes about. What it means and where the data came from and, and that we will be tracking it going forward.
So do we need to provide that additional uh, commentary or, or what you said, you're on it?
If, if, if you wanted to provide just a quick note that, that, that we should be adding the mix of vehicles. It's something that will hold our feet to the fire, so to speak. So, um, yeah.
Okay, Mary.
Hi, Mary Victor, Sammamish, twenty-three years. Probably gonna speak more from how I see climate. Um, first of all, I want you to know my husband works in the business of leak detection. So they have devices that can read, see, find leaks, power emissions and things like that. So I hear a lot about greenhouse gases and leaks. And the, I think some of the things to get people on board, uh. C O two is a bad thing, but methane is like a hundred times worse. And I think if people heard that when they're starting to do the, should I replace my furnace or what should I do? You need to go, do I really need to cook on gas anymore? And there's also things that, you know, maybe it causes asthma in children. Which my kids actually ended with asthma. We had gas where we lived abroad. I think people need to think about that. And I think if they think about that, then they just don't go buy the cheapest thing or the easiest thing or just do that. The replacement for what it was before. Um, I also had just replaced my water heater and just replaced my furnace and my air conditioner went out. It's like, do you do the heat pump or not? And there are environments where the heat pump doesn't work like in Montana where I grew up. It did just, it, the temperature is a little bit too different, so you can't do it. So I think there's a lot for people to learn. So I think if you're a homeowner. I mean, you're gonna have to paint the house periodically. You're gonna have to do siding. You have to do the roof. You need to know that your hot water heater goes out about ten, every ten years and hot water heaters don't like. Uh, just get old and tell you they blow up when they aren't working. So you, you need to know about that one. And your, your furnace, a forced air furnace, if it's a train and it's hard to stop a train, then lasts twenty years. And each one I've had has lasted twenty years on the mark. Um, there's also things with the venting, like the air conditioner actually went out because it's a hundred and eleven degree day. And the guy who put the air conditioner in aftermarket, he was the first owner of the house. He put in too big a one and you do that, it actually makes it freeze up more. So you want to make sure you size them correctly, right? So I've kind of been through all this and I mean, it's like, I think the one page sheets that are, you know, the helpful tips that are easy to read. And then maybe like a white paper on the back, like these are the questions to ask or these are the things to know or. These are the type of solar rebates that you can get or something like that, I think would be good. Um, but if you have people that are struggling or they're getting older and they've got an older house and they're like, and then do all these things, that how can I afford them? Sometimes there are programs they can do like, um, there's income restrictions. You can actually get your water and sewer reduced. Uh, if, if you know about that from, they started doing that with Spanish Plateau water. So I think there's a lot of communication. But the thing that I see most is, um, so like the other thing is, um. So I've looked at the water heater and I've looked at the furnace. So like, the other thing is, uh, so I've looked at the water heater and I've looked at the furnace, I've looked at the heat pump, probably need to go that way. When I do that, my electric panel on my nineteen ninety-six house is old enough, I need to do an electric panel and I know years ago that was going to be three thousand dollars to do. And then if I want to be able to plug in an EV, some people have done that recently on my street. I mean, it's like all these things wrapped together, so it's not just. One item, one thing, it's like, what are all the things that you need to do? And I think people need to understand for. Planning, you need to have, you know, a way to mortgage or get a home I could be able to own or, or consider those type of things and, um. I know when I first moved here, LP siding was a bad thing and so people were replacing it and those were forty to sixty thousand dollars to do that. And I was like, well, I've glad my house warehouse, you know, just paying it more often. Um, and then the windows are really good too, but windows also very expensive, so. I think there's a lot of things. I did do all the LEDs in my house and it was really expensive. It was like a thousand or twelve hundred bucks because there's like ninety-six lights in my house. My kids had to count them when they were in kindergarten, um, to just replace them. It took quite a while, but. I mean, like now I have seven watt bulbs instead of the sixty or I can't, can't really put a hundred watt in around my house. But I think a lot of those things, people just don't know about, like you can't do everything all at once, it would just make you crazy, but. You can do a little bit at a time and I'm going to speak about ways too, because my husband. Does fly over landfills, including Cedar Hills landfill. They have a kind of a drone that can go over. Um, the, one of the biggest emissions that we have is methane from landfill, so everybody goes, oh, I'm just gonna junk it, I'm gonna junk it. I'm gonna put my food scraps in it. That's one of the biggest contributors to methane. And if you want to get rid of methane, there's biomethane produced and if you can capture that, a lot of landfills capture that and then sell it, so you don't want to get rid of. Every single thing that uses methane because there's a lot for it, so. It's not like a single thing you can look at, but the things I see, having been a mom of two sons who are now. Twenty-seven and gonna be thirty this year, um. Like the easiest things are, um, you don't need to drive your kids to school every day. Like we used to do things like where one parent would walk the group of kids and then as the kids get older, the older kids walk the kids. And like if you live where McCullough or Smith is, you should be able to walk all the way to Inglewood. You shouldn't have to be driving. And the city's gonna do the parks program where they're redoing the fields at Inglewood that are desperately needed. Well, there's actually a stormwater plot right next to it that you could get some back connectivity through to get that. I brought it up at the parks meeting, I don't know if that'll happen, but we need, we need connectivity everywhere. There's what, five hundred, seven hundred dead end cul-de-sacs in the city. And I think my thing is, is, hey, if a tree went down on your main road, you couldn't get out. What would you do? You know, and if everybody gave like a back link, we'd be able to do that. So those are some things, um, I know when I used to go to the library a lot, there's a lot of people, they will sit. In the underground parking with their car on, on their phone, going nowhere. And like you can't even breathe when you go in and you're like, hey, can you stop idling? And like all the parents that drive their kids are idling all the time and. I read it, because I, I have a Prius and so it turns off itself all the time, right? It's fifteen years old, but I love it and it's a great car to drive. Um, if my Prius does turn off about every ten seconds, so like if I park somewhere, it isn't running the whole time. I'm at the traffic light, if you've got road construction and they're holding you up for five minutes, because we have to fix our roads, right? People need to know that. And I know when I go on the ferries, you know, there's no idling, there's a way you can pull over for it and I just. I think there's so many things we do in our life that we don't think about and cumulatively they do add up. Waste is one, idling is one. You know, riding with a neighbor to go somewhere, not driving the kids to school, using that, that school bus. Using the buses so that we don't end up with canceled things. I think people have to do that. Like I have friends when they go to the airport, they figure out how to ride the bus and it takes them hours, but they do it. Um, and I just, I think there's so many things that we can do and I think you need to know, uh. About them and, and, and also on the price of houses, we still have people on septic. And septic can do a lot of water pollution and they can hurt the fish streams, but to get from septic to sewer is super expensive. So I mean, there's just like all these things that add up and it's really, really hard to learn about them and. I probably learned about them just because I go to all the meetings and stuff, but it's even hard for me to have all those thoughts. You know, and the thinking and how do you do it? And I think if there's some brochures, like a stack of them, then the people can pick the one that they want to do. And, um, I've gone seven minutes, so I'll be quiet, but, um, stormwater, low impact development's good, but there's a lot of places, it's not technically feasible. We don't want to put gravel everywhere because it will create more stormwater and you'll end up with more trees going down in fires, so. Water goes downhill, floods, fires go uphill and burn everybody, so. A lot of things to think about.
You know, I'm not happy, no.
That's what goes down in my head at night, I can't sleep.
If a tree goes down my neighborhood, I'm gonna get my chainsaw out and cut it out of the way.
And if your chainsaw doesn't work, some of the trees are too big or too hard, you can call the fire department and even on a private road, they come.
Lots of different resilience. Uh, any more public comment? Was Mr. Stickney gonna comment?
No, Mr. Stickney, by the way.
Can you hear me? Can you folks hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Matt Larson. I'm the local government affairs manager with PSC. And I apologize, I didn't introduce myself at the beginning of the meeting when you said public comment for not, or non-agenda related issues. I didn't mean to. Come across like I'm quietly eavesdropping here. I just want to say I en- enjoyed the conversation. Uh, we are very pleased that the city thought to reach out to PSC and invite us to participate on the community advisory group. Uh, which my counterpart, Brandon Laboritz, who's the municipal liaison manager for Sammamish, does that. Uh, we enjoy the conversations with the staff, had a good meeting with David Pyle. Just wanted to let you know, uh, I was impressed with the conversation. It's very encouraging. It's hitting on many of the points and we look forward to partnering with you as the planning commission, the council, and certainly continue with the staff. Uh, to work on this, in this future sustainability committee. Uh, not only getting the, the cap done, but certainly all the work that needs to be done, the very difficult, complex work that needs to be done in the years ahead. Uh, so thank you for all your efforts and just wanted to let you know I was here tonight.
Thanks, Matt. We'll look forward to meeting you in person someday.
I look for, look forward to that as well.
Okay, thanks everybody for your comments. Uh, anything else on calendar or anything from staff?
Nothing to note. Other than I did reserve council chambers for October twelfth. We should have our room, so let's plan on October twelfth.
Actually, it wasn't so bad.
Cool, yeah.
Uh, please make sure that all of those meetings in October are on all of our calendars. All right, anything else from anybody? All right, would somebody move to adjourn? In a second, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no, thank you everyone. Have a nice evening.